Hopefully it'll be done by noon or better.
I'm heading up, so hopefully it's not there. Up the trail.
All the way?
To Gunflint Lake.
Uh-huh.
Good morning.
Morning.
Is that something new?
What's happening?
Do we verbally do that?
No, we're still be motioning to approve.
I just, I've not seen that before. So we'll do the whole thing, yeah, I know, but...
Oh, the approve the minutes, underneath the minutes? No, that's just, that's just syntax.
Part of it.
Did you make younger with your last person?
Ayes.
You can see.
You're missing something, I mean. That's awesome.
Good morning. I will call the regular meeting of the Cook County Board of Commissioners to order, where we are supporting community through quality public service. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we move on, I would like to make a comment about our voting. I talked to Stacy, and I think it'd be good if we could raise our hand also, along with our verbal, so that she doesn't have to take a course in lip reading. And I think it'll just improve all of our approval or not approval of whatever being asked for. So, we will do that. So, I ask for any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, you would note on your desk this morning, there was an updated agenda, and there were three additional items, and this is still a part of the training process. There were three items that were submitted, but not fully submitted, in the new Agenda Management System. And being that they were all mostly regular business items, we would ask that the three items, the snowmobile grant legal sponsor, the radio communications quarterly update, and the Cook County amateur radio team tower contracts, be added to the agenda that was originally sent out to you on Thursday last week.
Okay, anything else to be added? Motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hand. Those opposed? Same sign. Okay, at this time, we will have public comment. And probably due to weather, we don't have any brave ones, unless we do have someone out there? No?
Mike.
Okay, why don't you?
The others.
Okay.
Mike Carlson, 1655 East Highway 61. Just want to thank you for keeping some part of the government open.
So far, so good, Mike. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda items. Anyone want to pull anything on that? If not, then we'll have a motion to approve the agenda as a whole?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Same sign by voting? Thank you. All right, so moving on, the next item is the highway. And we have our engineer here to do some presentations for us.
All right, good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, colleagues, and members of the public. I'm going to address these items in reverse order, if that's all right. I have a couple of requests along with an update to provide for the board this morning. I'll start with an update. No action requested, simply an informational update on the Irish Creek Subordinate Governmental Service District, aka SGSD. As some folks are familiar, the Highway Department manages services for SGSDs in Cook County. We solicit bids twice per year for winter services and summer services, with some private road or privately maintained roads falling into one category or both. The one that I'm here to talk about this morning is our winter bids for the Irish Creek neighborhood. Also to note, each SGSD does have a road liaison who works closely with the Highway Department when things need to be addressed. This winter, we were, request, the apparent road bid contractor requested a release from the commitment to continue to provide winter services for this neighborhood. And the Highway Department contacted the second lowest bidder, who was willing to honor his bid and prepared to assume these services. So we did come to a mutually agreeable separation with the original contractor. So I, I'm just here to say that all's well that ends well. Because there was no contract for these services, that is why I'm not here requesting action today. We are looking at adding contracts for the future to make circumstances a little bit smoother to manage. But there is no contract this season, so no action required to terminate the contract. Should we require bid bonds? Should we require performance bonds in the future? I don't think so. We've talked about that, to avoid circumstances, or minimize the risk of circumstances like this happening. But we don't usually receive a lot of bids for any one SGSD, so it's probably premature to add bonding into the process. But we will be looking at adding contracts for the future. So this is just simply an update, in case some folks have received questions or heard about the change in winter maintenance for the Irish Creek SGSD. Next, I'll move on to the Friedenberg Creek culvert improvements resolution that is requested for your consideration. A little bit more about this project. This is a culvert replacement on County State Aid Highway 1 in the Schroeder neighborhood. Now, some folks might remember, I was here last year talking about the different phases of estimating a project. As I'm talking about this Friedenberg Creek resolution, along with the next resolution on other bridge priorities, I want to make sure and being clear in saying that these are planning level estimates. What that means is, we don't have a lot of information about these projects at this time. The planning level estimate for this Friedenberg Creek culvert replacement is somewhere maybe around $330,000 for the cost to both deliver or engineer and construct this structure. As we move forward in the project, we might learn that we can replace this location with a smaller culvert, in which case, the cost and our prospective match would also go down. I'm here before you today to request authorization from that map, for that match, thanks to the Soil and Water Conservation District, in particular Phil Larson. They were successful in securing a Conservation Partners Legacy Grant, not just for this culvert, but a couple of downstream culverts as well. And they are requesting our participation in this project, up to the amount of $82,979. So you can see, again, the project cost could go down as we learn more about the details of this particular stream crossing. But in any case, our match or our cost to replace this culvert is significantly less, thanks to their efforts in securing this grant, compared to if we were to replace it with our own funds or state aid funds someday. Depending on the permitting timeline, this project in Schroeder is expected to occur this summer, if we're able to get wetland permits, as well as the DNR permit that we need for this project. If not this year, then 2020. And we will keep County State Aid Highway 1 open during construction with a bypass. If there are any questions, I'm happy to take them on this project.
Thank you. Physically, where is this located, on County Road 1?
This is, this, I can't specify the exact mile post, but it is on County State Aid Highway 1, so west of Highway 61 in Schroeder.
Okay, so it's beyond the surfaced road, probably in the gravel area?
Yes.
Okay, because there's the Friedenberg development up there, too.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so any questions? Commissioner Mills?
Well, I just see in the resolution that it is, the culvert is currently deficient structurally, and so it does need to be addressed, and it's on the schedule. So I think it's, it's great to find these funds, and it's a small, small cost for us when we're matching those funds. I think that's great.
Commissioner Bushheim?
No questions. Great to get some support and help, and good effort by everyone.
Commissioner Duker?
Soil and Water Board did approve moving forward on this, and I would like to thank Kristin and the Highway Department for their collaboration with Soil and Water.
Commissioner Deschamps?
So our match will be coming out of the transportation sales tax money, correct?
Commissioner Deschamps, yes. It is not expected to impact the transportation sales tax program overall.
Okay. Be nice to get one off the list, anyway.
It's all great, as we work down our list of things to do on the roads in our county. So I will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any further comments or questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, thank you.
The next update that I have for this morning is our, just an update on our bridge program overall. You'll notice two different pieces of paper included in the packet for this one. I'm going to start with the second one. It might be a little bit difficult to read if you don't have a big, full-size copy. I apologize for that. But this is an informational update on the status of our bridges following last fall's inspections. You'll recall that at one time, we had the capacity to do bridge inspections in-house. A couple years ago, we had MINDOT, and last fall, we had a private firm, MSA, with a little bit more local experience inspecting our structures. When I get to the bridge priorities resolution in just a moment, that is a resolution that's typically passed every year. By passing that resolution, it opens up Cook County to eligibility for state bond funds and other programs that are managed by the state. For those who, if it's fresh in your memory, we did not pass one last year. We missed that during the vacancy, but it is typically an annual resolution informing the state of what our updated priorities are. So that is the intent of the resolution. That said, this longer list before you is not something that I'm requesting the board to approve at this time. This is what I would call strategic recommendations, or really an update on the structures that need attention in Cook County, overall. So I'm not asking the board to approve the funding in the column at the right. That might be where we go, that might be, that might not be where we go through our transportation planning process, but this isn't part of today's resolution. So I'll talk a little bit more about the details of this handout. When we ask for eligibility for state bridge bonds and other funding sources, our structures are put on what's called a waiting list. A waiting list is sometime, is a term that you might hear at the legislature level. Right now, there are over $100 million in projects awaiting at least $41 million in state bond funds, before we would have anything that would be eligible here at Cook County. And that's important to note, because there are some structures on the list for which we've already identified other funds that need to be addressed before state bridge bonds might become available. So if anyone's wondering why the bridge priorities resolution doesn't exactly match this longer list, it's because we know there are some structures that need to be replaced with either state aid funds or transportation sales tax funds before the time we would likely be eligible for bridge bonding. And that is part of the consideration. There are a couple of familiar structures on this list that we've talked about in the past. The North Gunflint Lake Road over Cross River, Moose Valley Road over Carlson Creek, and the Cassaw 1 structure over Two Island River, which is different from Friedenberg Creek, but in the same neighborhood. Those projects do have funds already identified for them. There are a couple of, I don't know if I would call them new structures, but a couple of other structures on this list that I wanted to call your attention to would be on the North Road over the Flut Reed River, also known as Bridge Number 16507. Every structure meeting the definition of a bridge in Minnesota has its own unique number. And also a culvert underneath the Hogs Bend Curve, the little Devil Track River on the Gunflint Trail. Those are a couple of structures based on MSA's bridge inspection findings that we need to definitely take a closer look at, I would say, within the next five years, based on what I know about them at this time. That, one of the next columns in here is sufficiency rating. That is a combination of factors. When bridge inspections are done, very detailed data is entered into a database, which then computes what is called a sufficiency rating. So the higher, the better. The scale goes up to 100, and anything below 50 is something that we definitely shouldn't ignore. Anything below 80 is typically eligible for assistance to preserve, if not replace them. Just, and again, some of the comments and potential construction cost funding sources aren't something that I'm looking for a board resolution of support on today, but they do play into the considerations of how soon we might want to replace some of these structures. We don't automatically replace the lower, the structure with the lowest sufficiency rating first. Sometimes other roads have no detours, sometimes other roads carry more traffic. You and I could choose to set priorities anyway. We could set priorities based on any one of those factors. Right now, it's kind of a subjective rating as to why we aren't prioritizing by sufficiency rating. And then also, the most recent annual average traffic counts that we have for each of these structures, that is the best data currently available. I fully expect that the Gunflint Trail carries more than 2,600 vehicles a day on certain summer weekends. I could say the same about many other roads in Cook County, but the best data that we currently have available are the annual average counts that the state provides. So that is a little bit more on the bridge summary. I'm happy to take any follow-up questions from yourselves or members of the public who may be tuning in. Feel free to call the Highway Department anytime with any questions on the details of some of these future needs. With that, I'll move into the bridge priorities resolution, which is requested for your consideration this morning. And again, the intent of this resolution is to make certain structures eligible for funding assistance. There are many structures that fall on this list right now. I did put Cross River on there. If we are able to receive funding assistance, it would lessen the amount that we would provide from transportation sales tax funds or other local funds. Also, the Seagull Creek culvert on the Gunflint Trail, Sabell Creek structure on the upper end of the Sabell Trail, there's a structure on the Alfred Creek Road, a couple of structures on the Flut Reed River, with one of them being in worse condition than the other, and the bridge at the upper end of the Arrowhead Trail near McPhail and Lake, and also a bridge on the Cascade Beach Road over Spruce Creek. These are the ones, based on my judgment, that would make the most sense to request state assistance for. There are cost estimates here. Again, those are planning level estimates. We do not know a lot of the engineering details about most of these projects at this time, so it is possible those estimates could change. The last thing that I want to touch on is the planned construction timeframe here. I know that it is not realistic to expect funding assistance for more than one bridge per year. All of these are priorities in Cook County, without a doubt. But in comparison, I have received funding assistance for two structures over the past five years, as long as I've worked in Lake County. So we do need to prepare ourselves to aggressively address our bridge program with state aid funds and transportation sales tax funds where we can, over the next five years, because it's very likely that even though we're requesting assistance for all of these structures, we might not receive them when, when it's needed. So if there are any follow-up questions, or if I could provide more detail, I would be glad to do so, in requesting your support of the annual bridge priorities resolution.
Thank you for that. It's good to see that we're already looking at out to 2025, and beyond, I'm sure, starting next year into later in their century. So any questions or comments? Commissioner Deschamps?
No, I think this is the list we kinda went over at the Highway Board anyways. Just make note that myself and Kristin and some people from Lake County, we're going to the Transportation Day on February 7th at the Capitol, so maybe people know what's going on with funding.
Commissioner Duker?
Thank you for taking time to go to that session. It's important. Thank you for meeting with my constituents on the Cross River Bridge. They are all less stressed out, knowing what's happening in their future of the bridge, so thank you. I have no other questions.
Commissioner Bushheim?
Appreciate your planning, looking ahead, and looking at all the alternatives for funding and so forth. It's good work. Thanks.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, it's really encouraging to see this kind of timeframe and plan laid out for us to, to plan ahead and to try to secure funding. I did have a question just about the sufficiency rating. We can go into more details about that. I'm really curious about the algorithm and what data is used. I assume the average traffic counts are of a significant factor into that?
Commissioner Mills, yes.
Okay.
The traffic counts do affect the sufficiency rating.
And, and it, we rely on MINDOT for those numbers? The, the traffic count numbers?
Yes, that is also correct.
Yeah. I know just from sitting in on the County Road 45 meeting, that those numbers can, can look strange to us a little bit. And so, is there, is there something we can do as, as a county to encourage MINDOT to look at those numbers more? As far as accuracy or inaccurate count, I think it's important to, especially when it affects our sufficiency rating, to really nail those numbers down. And I know, from seeing on the Parks and Trails Commission, there's something called, I think it's Geo-Fencing, where they can just use cellphone crossing a gate that's just plugged in by whoever wants to look at the road or, or trail, to get a pretty darn accurate number. So I don't know if MINDOT's using those tactics at this point, but...
Commissioner Mills, I would like to answer that from a couple different perspectives. First of all, the Highway Advisory Committee and myself, we have talked about how we could obtain more accurate traffic counts for Cook County. Whether or not it is able to impact our sufficiency rating, that's important data to have, as we look at designing our pavements and our bridges and even our gravel roads. So there is definitely interest in potentially looking at the different options for doing our own traffic counts, whether, at some point in the next couple, say, two, three years, depending on the method and the cost that we would look at for doing so. So I would expect to report back on that at some point, just to obtain more accurate data for a variety of reasons. The second thing I would like to mention on sufficiency rating is, it is a factor that is used, or a term that is used, but we don't have to prioritize bridges in accordance with the sufficiency rating. And it has very little, albeit some, but very little effect on whether or not we receive funding for some of these structures. So even if there might not be a better way to get more accurate traffic counts incorporated into this formula, that's okay, because we still, at our own discretion, choose which structures go on this bridge priorities resolution every year. But I will look into that. I do, I do not know if providing our own traffic counts to the bridge office is an option. I will look into that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we will need a motion on this for the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much, Kristin.
Thank you for your support. Drive slowly and safely out there today.
Right.
Madam Chair, if I could, Todd Smith is, is here to discuss the item, the abatement of the parcel. And the abatement, the abatement of the parcel requires a resolution, not just a motion, which means that it should be, should have been pulled out of consent agenda and discussed individually. So I would ask that we have Todd present that item. It shouldn't take long, it's...
Thank you, Jeff. I guess we probably need a little context on this one. Once in a while, you see me come before you with, with an abatement for various reasons. This one is for a fire abatement. This one is, you may or may not know that Thelma Headstrom's property was burned to the ground on October 14th. This leaves the county as, this is what's called a, a local option disaster abatement. We have the option as a county. We don't have to abate these taxes for, for this property, but it's my recommendation that we do this in this case, because this was a, an accidental fire. There was no, nothing strange about it. I've seen the, the police report on it. And, and for that, for that case, I'm, I'm requesting an, an abatement of, we, we get to abate her taxes for the last two months of 2018, being that the structure was unusable. And I've already gone, we will be changing the value, removing the value of the structures for the 19, so that she won't be taxed on those structures. So in doing so, I'm asking for the resolution to, to, to approve the abatement. Once, we've got a couple other fires that have occurred in Cook County in the last two, three years. The other two fires that have occurred were actually under investigation. They were, I think one, the one in Holborn was deemed as arson, and there's arson suspected for the one down in Lutson on County Route 35. So for those reasons, I'm not, I haven't abated those. If something comes to light in the future, especially with the one down on, in Lutson, I will, I will determine whether that one is, is, we should abate or not. But in this case, this is a clear accident. I feel it's correct and just to, to abate the current taxes and change the 19. So I'm open to questions by anybody.
Okay. Commissioner Mills? You have any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Bushheim? Commissioner Duker?
So does the resident approach you, or do we just...
No, I usually, I hear about these things, obviously, like everybody else does. Resident can approach me, but in this case, I heard about this right away, and I, I sent her an application. I talked to, I believe it was Howard, in this case, I talked to Thelma as well. And yeah, this was purely accidental, we got the, the police report on it. So I made a determination that this is, this is something we could exercise our option to abate.
So we'll probably see the Christmas fire one coming up next?
I haven't gotten any information on that one yet.
Okay.
Commissioner Deschamps?
No questions.
Okay. Well, good thing it was brought forward to you, and that will be taken care of then for 2019, right?
Yep.
Okay, so, we'll need a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any further comments or questions? All in favor? Aye by sign?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Thank you, Todd. Okay, now we'll have Land Services and Mr. Nelson.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We have a provision in our zoning ordinance that's actually unique to our zoning ordinance beyond other ordinances, that require any initiation of an amendment to the ordinance text to be initiated either by the Board of Commissioners, the Planning Commission, or a citizen of, of the county. Other ordinances, internal staff can prepare modifications and just initiate a, an amendment process. But the zoning ordinance is unique in that respect. And what we have before you today is, I'd like to initiate the process to amend the zoning ordinance, is basically just... It's basically just a housekeeping change. About 10 years ago, the state legislature finally passed the interim use provision, which up until that point, the county's only tool for the higher grade type of permitting was the conditional use. And so the conditional use has very few flexibilities with it. Counties were trying to impose time limits and other kinds of limits along with the conditional use. But as it turned out through case law and everything, that the conditional uses, once approved, ran with the property and the counties just did not have the flexibility to impose time limits and property ownership transition limits and such. And so they did adopt the interim use permit, which we basically kind of run hand in hand with the conditional uses. But when we did incorporate that process into the zoning ordinance, there's a few things that had been missed over under the special considerations for the gravel pits in particular. It came to our attention this last time around that in the ordinance, it actually states that the permits would be reissued or renewed when it's actually a review of the permits. And we've been doing this for 10 years now. So this is basically just a housekeeping change, so I'd like the board to go ahead and initiate the amendment process. This is not the end of it, but the beginning, and we would hold the public hearing at the February meeting of the Planning Commission.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Questions or comments? Commissioner Deschamps?
No questions.
Commissioner Duker?
No questions.
Commissioner Busham?
Makes sense. I think it was confusing and should help a little bit.
Clear it up. Commissioner Mills?
No questions. Thank you.
So you're going to initiate the ordinance amendment and you want us to pass a resolution? Not now?
Madam Chair, just like a motion passed to...
Okay.
Yeah, just a motion passed simply to initiate the process.
To initiate that. And that's going to come up then at your meeting on February 13th?
That is correct.
Okay. And it'll come back to us?
And it'll come back for final approval.
Okay. So we'll need a motion for this?
So moved.
Support.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. We have Rowan coming forth with tower contracts.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
The first item I have is C-CART tower contracts. It's a request to approve three separate contracts. C-CART is a subset of our local amateur radio club and ham radio operators, and they are specifically called out in our emergency operations plan. And because of that, we have a request from the Sheriff's Office and our Emergency Management Director to have them formally approved on our tower without any lease rate. And because they are formally incorporated into the public safety plan, the second request is also to waive a $900 year fee associated with the three towers. The $900 fee is standard. We do $300 for other public safety entities per base station. So they have three essential radios at each tower site. And because they don't have their own meter, they use our utility, our electricity. It's sort of just how we do our internal cost accounting. But because they are amateur and volunteer, we're also making a request that that gets waived. But for cost accounting purposes, it will be included and tracked internally in the MIS Department.
Well, there's quite a bit here to understand, but I assume that we will discuss this with you. So if we have questions or comments, Commissioner Mills?
No, I don't have any questions or comments. Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Busham?
No.
Commissioner Duker?
No questions.
Commissioner Deschamps?
I think the amateur radio group, they worked the sled dog race and quite a few different things, don't they?
They do. They volunteered a handful of different events. And their services and along with the armor system get incorporated well. So to keep maybe unnecessary traffic off the armor system, logging racers' times and things like that, they're a huge asset. But specifically, they are called out in the emergency operations plan should we have some sort of severe catastrophic failure. They're also there to be called upon for emergency purposes as well. And this is Ares Group that gets background checked in, and it's a subset of that group. But the equipment is open to the broader group, BWRK.
Looks good.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll need a motion to approve the three contracts presented by the amateur radio and request to waive the $900 per year lease fees associated with the three cart tower contracts.
So moved.
Second? Ooh.
That was a tie. You just...
Oh, I think Commissioner Deschamps got it.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? All in favors? Sign by?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Rowan.
Thank you. The second item I have today is our quarterly radio communication program report. These reports follow the 911 Communications Committee meeting that we have locally, and it just gives us an opportunity to give you guys an update on the projects that the radio communication program is working on, as well as keep the public informed and make sure that we're keeping everybody up to date on the projects that are coming forward. The vision of the radio program is to maximize service while minimizing impact, and the majority of our projects, or all of our projects strive to meet that vision. Handful of things that I'll go over today will be the 911 redundancy, a list of the top five cell phone, cell service projects, the remaining MinDOT armor projects, a status update on where those are, a brief summary of our operational and project works for this year, 2019, as well as an update on the Highway 61 BDA coverage projects. 911 redundancy is something that we've been working on for a long time, and not too long ago, we got redundancy for CenturyLink, that CenturyLink trunk. CenturyLink is a statewide provider of 911 services. And what that provided is if there was a cut from the trunk between Duluth and Grammeray, that their NESC fiber would be a redundant path for that. What we have today that's new is that now that NESC fiber fails back over onto the CenturyLink. And so their trunk, so there's true redundancy back and forth. We're waiting for a test to confirm that this week, but the emails that I have here say that that has all been done. And just for context, what that does, that NESC fiber provides internet connectivity to all of our county buildings, the hospitals, school, library, Cook County higher ed, Graham Portage tribal government buildings, and I believe some state and other buildings. So part of the 911 redundancy project we were pushing was, we need the redundancy for the 911 failures, but also to have redundancy to the county government buildings. And this final piece looks to be in position, and we should be able to have a test confirming that sometime this week. Moving on, our top five cell service projects. We have several other ones, but there are three AT&amp;T ones at the Sawbill site, near the Sawbill and the Grade, the Holland site at the end of the Tower Road in Holland, and Old Ski Hill north above Grammeray, that we expect have a good chance to be completed in 2019. And two T-Mobile sites, Mid Trail and Lutson site, also expect to be finished and online, providing new service in Cook County. The MinDOT projects are, what was formerly called Lima Mountain, has been changed because of a denial from the U.S. Forest Service because of the Wilderness Act. We stated that in the last meeting, and then we had announced that we were considering the alternative of Mitt Lake. The update I have on that one is that at the last Wednesday, the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment approved a conditional use permit and a variance for that site. So you guys should see that on your next agenda. And that is a 190-foot tower. The variance was to move it along the western property line to ensure that we didn't need tower lights. And it is a key redundancy piece for the armor system of the trail, as well as providing coverage. The other piece is the Seagull Tower site, the Seagull Lake. Our local Forest Service, the District Ranger and their office did approve that site as described before. But the update I have is that it's just been, a final process needs to happen before MinDOT can start their six-month process. And in the middle of that process, we had a federal government shutdown that continues to go on, so it is delayed. But at this point, both of those armor sites are still on track for 2019. But there's something to be aware of, that MinDOT is still seeking that formal acceptance from the Forest Service before they can begin their six-month process. And that, the longer we get into 2019, obviously, that starts to cut into the construction season. So it's something that we'll be watching and hoping to see move forward. Our operational projects, operational work and other projects, we continue to move forward with contracts for our existing tenants, like the three that you just approved, as well as other ones. MediaCom is an existing tenant, and a new one is the 148th Air National Guard out of Duluth is co-locating on our tower. So is there other agreements that will continue to be approved? Our project list is long for 2019. I won't go through all of them, but the active projects are 15, and we have 10 more in queue, and they're large projects. One that has been brought up is the radio tuning and programming. We've been working on that over the last two months. It's going out and touching 700-plus radios, and we have well over 500 done today and should be finishing the rest soon. BDA's along Highway 61. There are two areas of concern, and in our report, our last quarterly report, we were looking for coverage studies to show that, and we received those. We, from our 911 Communication Committee, reviewed it. They approved of the TOFT coverage area, the plan there. And so what we're looking at is seeking approval from MinDOT in two different ways. One, for a gravel pit that they own and potentially putting somewhere between a 90 and 140-foot tower there, as well as that plan and the way that it incorporates with the armor system. So because MinDOT maintains and manages the armor system and they control the license, they have it licensed through the FCC, they ultimately need to approve any outdoor BDA's that would be manipulating those frequencies. And so we are seeking approval from both of those. Once we have approval for those, the final piece will be funding, and we've talked about it before, but we will probably be looking at state and regional grant funding possibilities, and then likely coming to the County Board for recommendations or support. The Holland area one, we are still waiting on one remaining technical question. Specifically, there was some areas that didn't get coverage based on the coverage study that we had done, and we want to know to make sure before we move forward with the one that as designed, that we would have the ability to make other changes in the future, should that, should it be needed or deemed necessary. And so we have one that's ready to go and one that we're hoping to have a good technical solution for shortly. And that concludes my report. I would stand for any questions on any of that.
Well, it's great. Just taking notes here pretty fast. Maybe in the future, you can, you know, when you get down to a sizable list, you can let us know...
Sure.
...about all that. Because it does affect different areas in the county in case we would get questions about what's going on with a 90-foot tower and the TOFT gravel pit or, you know, that type of thing.
Yep.
Or they can, you know, contact your office too.
Absolutely. Questions for the public, contact myself or Rena Rogers. And then also, perhaps in the future, I can break this report down and stop in between and ask if there are any questions on any specific items.
Okay. Very good. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you very much for the quarterly report. I appreciate that, and it's good to stay in the loop there. Sorry for my ignorance. What does BDA stand for?
Bidirectional amplifier.
Oh, okay.
So it's enhancing coverage without the cost of a full-blown armor site.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Busham?
Thanks for all your work, Rowan. It's pretty awesome what you do sometimes at one person.
Commissioner Duker?
No questions. Thank you for your time with the Planning Commission and all of the work in research and the starting over numerous times in order to make it work. And I'm really glad you're optimistic about the Forest Service and the government opening, but thinking we might not have a tower at the end of the trail in 19, which will be fine.
Commissioner Deschamps?
Well, thanks for the report. I think a lot of people are anticipating the cell service up in my district.
Definitely.
One tree districts?
Thanks so much, Rowan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on, we'll have a discussion on our communications strategies and concerns and moving forward with all of that. We had a really in-depth discussion last meeting with our committee as a whole, and two hours and 15 minutes later, we came up with a good, long list. And right now, we have some summaries of all that for discussion, and then how we handle this going forward with putting some of these into effect in the future. So we have Valerie before us here. Would you like to have comments or questions right away?
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for having me back.
So we have, and we will discuss, and you've all read the summary, about the different points here, developing, researching, considering, developing. Because we had a lot of information, it was broken down into this summary so that we can talk about where we want to move forward with all of this and take a few bite sizes rather than try to take a whole bunch. We want to do it strategically and develop maybe a schedule, research, public meeting schedule and all of that. So we want to improve the public engagement and transparency, of course, with everything that we discussed in our committee meeting. So I'm just going to open it up for comments to discuss things that you feel are important out of all of these. We can take some of them, move forward. We can take two or three highlighted ones and move forward with that. So I like the idea of developing a schedule, for one thing, and perhaps having a county column in the newspaper? Any thoughts on that?
What did you mean by developing a schedule?
Madam Chair, if I may? The Communications Committee has been meeting and will help manage an editorial calendar.
Oh, an editorial schedule?
Yeah, an editorial schedule. So for various members of administration or elected officials have a calendar of what topics are timely, and then the deadlines attached to those. And my office will help manage the production schedule with the newspaper.
And then working on to the information page on the website and including responses from public comment and Commissioner Con... and Commissioner concerns and questions about the county policy and operations. Any thoughts on that? Is that one of the highlights? Or one of the things you would like to see us move forward with, with the Communication Committee?
I support all seven bullets on here. I don't see why we can't do them.
Okay.
I don't expect them to be done tomorrow.
No.
But we could work on all of them throughout this year.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner DuKirk on that note. In my mind, the highest priority would be the public meeting schedule. I think that would really impact that emotional aspect of what we're seeing at meetings and some of that conflict. However, I think it's very important and relevant to do all of the bullet points. I think each one touches on a different portion of our population. And so, I could see them all being necessary. The one that I put the lowest priority is probably the citizen survey. I see the value in that because it can be a regular statistical point. But I think there could be a significant cost and be, it could also get kind of mundane or ignored at a certain point, too, whether it be from participants or just the outcomes. But I think it's worth a shot.
So, you would like to see that more at the bottom of the list?
That would be my lowest priority, I think, at this point. But I do think we should look at it. I just don't know enough of what it costs and how that would all work.
And of the shortlist of suggestions, that is the one that will take more time and research. It would take us some time to get quotes.
Right. And about the questions.
Exactly. So, the others on this list are realistic and feasible to implement sooner than later, which is why we took this shortlist away from the really good discussion that was had last week. There was a lot of potential solutions. But of, on this list, you know, building out more of our communication tools and building in more opportunities for public engagement directly are realistic, and we can do those sooner than later. That one, we would need to come back for board input, likely at Committee of the Whole, as well as findings of quotes to another board meeting. Thank you.
And as far as developing a public meeting schedule, we already have quite a few that we'll just, that we would work in between jail study, transportation, equalization, County Road 45, short-term rental, and the budget.
And there's also County, Fifth Street West, Fifth Avenue West, sorry, that was not on this list, but the Highway Department informed us after the fact that the, will likely be in the spring, and then, the County Road 45 will likely be sometime in the summer when more seasonal residents are available.
Okay. So, that would be for the road over here? From the Highway Department, what it was called?
Fifth Avenue West.
Okay. Okay, so, that'll work in, in the spring, you say?
Yes.
Okay.
Spring. And then, the County Road 45 would likely be closer in the summer when more seasonal residents are available.
Right.
Just a point of clarification. When we had this discussion, the speaker piece issue was mentioned as well. So, if that's not included in this summary, does that means that that's not going to be a priority? Or is that a separate issue?
I think that's still a priority. It'd just be a separate issue in the course of the outcomes of previous board and it being deferred.
Okay, thank you.
It's still on the agenda. I'm just not sure when it will be coming back to the board's schedule.
Right.
Do we need to make it as a bullet point so it doesn't get lost? I see it's in there.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, really what we're asking is we're asking for you to acknowledge that this is a summary of the conversation that we had last week and that the priorities that are advanced in that summary of the Committee of the Whole minutes and on those five bullet points are the right things for us to be working on. And we're not really asking for prioritization or scheduling. We're not asking for resources. We're just, just to say, yeah, that's pointing us in the right direction. The item that I would suggest could stand a little more of your input on would be the public information sessions, the public meetings. And I don't know that we can actually have that conversation now until we actually get you to schedule the public meetings that are scheduled related to particular topics. I think it'd be better for everybody to see what that schedule looks like before we commit to so many more meetings, you know. But considerations would be, would they all be here? Would they be spread throughout the district? Would they be on a regular schedule? I'm not asking for those determinations or decisions today just to be thinking about those things so that when we come back with that schedule and we ask you how you would like to fill it in with other public opportunities without an agenda, how would we moderate those meetings? What is, would we have a theme for any one of them? Or would they just be completely open? So, lots of conversation related to that one. But I think that discussion still has to happen after we fill in the bones of the regular schedule of public meetings that we know are going to be held throughout 2019. It'll probably take us the next month to get those things nailed down. But we should be able to have them nailed down pretty quickly.
Anything else? Otherwise, we'll go back to the Communication Committee to work on some more planning and some more ideas and scheduling and all that. So, other than that, I guess, unless you have anything to add?
One last thing is, just looking at our, the topic-specific meetings, I think there is a real value in having multiple meetings for one topic. I know there's a lot of questions, and it can go back and forth. I feel like every meeting runs out of time. And so, there's always some overflow there. But then, to be able to follow up, I think, is real critical. Instead of saying, well, we talked about that. It's not just talk about it once and it's over. It's go back to it, revisit it, see if there's any other concerns that came up. And I know that could double the list of our topic-specific meetings. But maybe it would be appropriate to have follow-ups to try to rope in numerous topics. But I thought that was important to say.
Right, okay. Anything else? So, Valerie, are you ready to go forward to the Communication Committee?
Yeah, I think we just wanted to bring, you know, the summary back to make sure it was captured in a timely manner. The, on the second and third pages of the report is the more detailed information of what we covered. But just wanted to not lose momentum and ask for your support to move forward with a couple of these things that we can start researching and start putting calendars together so that we can move forward with them. So, thank you for your time. And I'm sure there is going to be quite a few of these discussions in the year to come. And it's a great demonstration of the board and administration's commitment to improved public engagement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, for information only from Brady on the travel meal expenses?
Yeah, this question came up a couple of weeks ago. What are our current costs for meals? And our best estimate here is about $11,364 for all departments, Human Services, Highway, General Fund. And to do a rough estimate of what that costs, how many meals that is, and at our $37 current rate, that would come out to about 307 full meals. Now, of course, it's not that way. There's so many breakfasts, so many lunches, so many dinners. We didn't count every, didn't do that, hours of research to do that. So, we're just going to use that as the estimate. And then, the discussion was, well, what if we raised that? There was, the GSA rate was 55. So, assume the same general spread and divide the 55. At 307 full-day allowances, about $16,855. So, our rough estimate is to increase the meal costs. From 37 to 55 would cost about $5,500 annually. And then, you can use any set of numbers to come up with, you know, different alternatives. It doesn't have to be 37, it doesn't have to be 55. It could be something else.
Okay. Well, there'll be a process that this will go through, the Personnel Committee. And it'll take a little while for them to look things over. And obviously, it's going to affect our budget. So, we'll need to look at that in depth also. But right now, are there any questions about this process to go back to the Personnel Committee and do all that?
They'll make a recommendation to us. Okay.
Okay.
Second item is just an annual resolution supporting the DNR snowmobile grants. And we're acting as the fiscal agent for those grants. And so, this allows us, this general resolution for the specific grants that come each year. Ask for approval of that.
And that's funding for 2019?
Yes. The resolution's on the backside.
Resolution, okay. Questions, comments?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Okay. Thank you. You can.
Okay.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Okay. All in favor, show a sign by support. Any against? Same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brady. Employee concerns or comments reports. Commissioner reports. Anything exciting that you want to report on? We're just kind of beginning our year, so. Commissioner Bushine?
Well, I could just report on restorative justice. And we've had some meetings, and we're having a meeting in June today with volunteer facilitators. And we've had one case. And the attorney may correct me or add any information. But, and we're going to debrief on that today. But there'll also be two more referrals, I hear. And so, the people that have been engaged in this are very enthusiastic, and they've committed a lot of time. Seems to be going very well. I think the future is, you know, should this expand and get more training with more people. That's basically an update. Anything else?
Thank you, Commissioner Bushine. I'm just grateful that the program exists. It really is filling a gap that is necessary. We recently referred a juvenile case of shoplifting towards the restorative justice program. You know, a 12-year-old kid, we shouldn't be dragging them into court at this point in their life for various reasons. And, let's see, what, I can't remember. Oh, an adult case. We've requested that the court order, as part of sentencing, that a gentleman be put through the restorative justice program. That's a case that involves property damage and, you know, scaring some local residents with some intoxicated behavior. And it's, restorative justice is just an excellent way to get face-to-face accountability between an offender and a victim so that a person can understand the real impact, human impact of their actions. So, specifically with these two cases, I'm thinking it's, with the restorative justice program is just really appropriate. So, hoping that it continues. And really grateful to the volunteers who are coordinating it. We'll keep sending cases that way.
It sounds like a real emotional and intense, or is that not, I suppose, not always the case?
It is. You know, we've spent 16 hours in training and, last spring, I guess it was, or the summer. And a lot of that training was done by a professional on how to deal with emotional issues and community issues. And then, to guide people to try to work through a process in dealing with conflicts. And but, it also has the added impact of legal issues. And so, it's, I think it's really great from the standpoint that community members are committing to this. So, it's not someone that's out to get you or, you know, to put you away or lock you up or arrest you. It's a real community concern about how we conduct ourselves. And our behaviors can affect others negatively. And so, I think it's that learning experience that some people just need to go through that how they talk to, how they confront people or something like that is, causes harm to other people. And that's not a good way to live without getting punitive and locking people up and, you know, getting records because that's sometimes just, it's a preventative kind of thing. And it's very effective wherever it's been used. And we have great people. Wow. We've gone through a lot of simulations. And we've got some very, very good people that can handle some of these tough situations.
Any other Commissioner reports?
I had the annual meeting at ARC on Friday. And they did a presentation on mental health court in St. Louis County. It was very interesting. And whenever we have Human Service, I'll bring the flyer for you guys to look at. The probation officer that's in charge of that went through the whole thing with us. It's very interesting. Sometimes it works, and sometimes it doesn't.
Okay, thank you on that. Meetings to note?
And Dave are heading for Commissioner 101 tomorrow.
We're heading south.
Okay, that's good. Good time to do that. Meeting updates. Nothing on that? Okay.
I do want to thank Commissioner Bushine for taking, stepping up as an alternate for two of the meetings I'll be missing while I'm at the training. I appreciate that.
Least I could do.
Well, we try to work it out among ourselves when we know that we're going to be gone and see what we can cover. And if not, most of the time, we can either get a report from them or find out what's been going on. So, that's great that we can all work together.
Dave's covering a couple of meetings for me, so thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Okay, very good. All right, if there's nothing else, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you.